Call. I'd like to not call the regular fighting mission meeting on Wednesday October 19th, 2022 to work. First item of business, please, let's stand for slightly.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jennifer Layden here, Carla Jimenez here, pregnant tonight, you're Zach Breezy. Sam Irons.
President.
Ethan Salata.
Here.
Jacob King.
Here.
All commissioners are present in the county. So first item of business, please. Looks like we got two sets of meeting minutes to approve, the first of which being August 17th, 2022. There are going to be chest of weed minutes. So any additions or deletions or modifications is not.
I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, but when you're planning official rec report. Down a few lines, you have special projects manager, Walt, right, I guess. That should actually be moved up so that you notice it the first time with his whole name there.
Oh, okay.
Then you've got you.
Good catch.
That was a error in. Anyway, that's all I have on it.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to say it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
So we understand what the proposed correction is.
Yeah, we got it.
So that I make like a motion to approve meetings from August 17th, what the changes the very much pointed out. Second. The motion to approve August 17th, meeting minutes 2022. By Commissioner Salata, seconded by Breezy, all those in favor. Raise your hand or. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I don't think I have an end to roll call on that.
Abstaining.
Yeah.
So we have a an extension on the basis that she didn't attend that meeting and I'd like to look that up to make sure that's a real thing.
That is a real thing.
It is a real, it is a real thing.
Okay.
And it even says throw them the top of them.
Okay, yeah, all right, so if you're not there, you can't.
Okay.
All right.
So we understand so Ragnas abstaining.
She's gonna be abstaining.
Okay, and the rest were ayes.
Okay, gotcha.
So motion passes. Again, for September 28th, meeting 2022. Any additions, additions, modifications or motions?
I have some correction. That's all right, stop that. Down here, say purpose.
I would change your lead first page.
Okay, gotcha. Says purpose and then. The second line where it says the boardman development code, I think those was.
It is.
And then you use the abbreviation will be BBC. And then from there on, there are places where you put right coordinate code all the way out. So you might want to do a finer replace there.
Okay.
So you see like down in staff reports, I think that first time it comes up.
Gotcha.
Oh, you might look at. Oh, page two. And I think this is my, okay, so and. For 4.1 and you have one and two, approve all the requests consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I call it and the boardman comprehensive plan, BCP, as five goal one. I think that's me not understanding how you're referencing those. Does then it comes along somewhere else and there's like eight. Goal two, you know.
So I think what that was referencing those, I think that was what that was ref- referencing. Commissioner Tenai is in the staff report, I indicated that there's. Five goal ones, citizen involvement policy, so you kind of have to, even though there's a semicolon in there, that's that's a listing issue. So the comprehensive plan has five goal one citizen involvement policies which support citizen engagement.
So it has five goal ones? Oh, really?
No, there are five, no, there are five goal one citizen involvement policies. You could take out goal five citizen involvement and just say there are five policies.
I think, yeah, somewhere along those need to be, because it reads very long. And if somebody's trying to, and then.
How about if we just say, how about if we just take out the goal one, so it says it has five citizen involvement policies, would that make it easier?
Yeah, only if that's accurate.
It is, it's still accurate.
Then under number three. The second paragraph in section 4.1.701. See, she suggests adding language, I would. Like instead of using that pronoun right there, you're not sure who were referring back to as she.
That was me.
Okay, so maybe we could insert a name instead of.
Sure, sure.
Because it was. Same same thing kind of happens now where you have that sentence that just leads in, she didn't ask the. Just for clarity, you know.
Where's that at? Uh, just.
It's that next, yeah. Oh, over under. Page three of five. Kelly Derry. The second sentence is has says official. Well, wherever is says, I think of wherever it says, city manager, I think this was getting up is. I'm not.
Oh, so I, yeah. Whatever it says. It says also it is says, good catch, good catch.
Okay, I guess. Should I miss something, but that's enough for now.
So you guys have all of the.
Yeah.
Notification notice.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the motion? And the most you do through the minutes, what are the changes that Commissioner Tenai? Okay, so we have a motion to pass the meeting that's September 28th, approved through. By Commissioner Salata, the modifications noted. Second, my Jimenez. All those in favor, say aye. All the same side. I don't think we have any exceptions, motion passes again, honestly. One recommendation. Regular that would have is unpunchable and stuff that's not. Content based, we might want to send our notes to them prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
And then they can make those modifications.
I had wondered about that and then. They would reset those out.
So I think that's a hit it out.
Yeah, if we, yeah, I have wonder about that and. Especially if you send them out. Big changes. We can, or I can use a search, so you guys don't have to. Be redlined.
Hopefully we're spelling will be awesome for them to have that beforehand.
Yeah.
Then contact, you can wait until the meeting.
Well, I hope that people use more and more that the minutes get done, that we don't have these kind of things.
All right. So we go onto the next item. This is public hearing, A B C 22 dash zero zero two. And just to, I guess, give me and the rest of the commission, I think there are a few commissioners missing, including myself, I apologize for that. A little update on status and where that's at before we get into the hearing. And that was sort of like a subterfuge, firm understanding of where that's at.
Yeah, so the last meeting. So. Just want to read the motion that was made at the conclusion of last public hearing on this. Commissioner Tenai made a motion to continue the discussion of the Boardman Development Code amendments, the October 19th, 2022 meeting. And Commissioner Yamanis seconded that motion and passed 403 absence, so. We asked to be very clear that that motion meant that the public testimony was closed and that was the conclusion of. Those that were here, so the public testimony of this action for the planning commission has been closed. Tonight is for update from the. Planning commit, uh, planning official base on the recommendations from those of you on the dais about the document itself. There's a few, been a few changes to the staff report. We also have another item to make you aware of tonight and at your, at your approval, we can add it to the record. But there is no public testimony tonight on the record based on how you concluded last month, so. I'll give you an update and then you guys will move into deliberation. And then from deliberation, this is a recommendation of city council, it's not a planning commission final decision. Whatever decision you make tonight will be a recommendation of the city council.
We, we weren't able to communicate to all the rest of you guys, that's why the narrative was important when we talked about this last, last month. We, we, we get another chance to do this, that's why we continued that, that hearing, isn't that why you continued that?
Well, there's a difference in continuing and leaving it open for additional public comment or continuing your deliberations. And that leaves the record open.
Because, because one of the issues that I had is the cops were called on me, okay, at this meeting. And it's because Carla interrupted revenue because she wanted to close the, close the meeting and not even do this. And, and, and she said, no, wait, we're going to wait till next month. So now all of you guys haven't been updated about what my attorney and what I said as far as issues going forward with, with, with this. So I have.
So I would say that all the commissioners have been presented meeting minutes from the last commission meeting as well as video of, of the meeting itself.
Okay, but one of the issues that I also wanted to bring up, Jacob, okay, is that you don't live in Moro County, okay? You, I mean, you, you live in Moro County, you don't live inside the city limits and you have recused yourself in the past when it comes to. Entity and power line domain issues, so that is one thing that I wanted to bring up as well too. To say, hey, wait a second, maybe that's.
So I, I don't want to hold up the whole meeting so we can get moving, but to respond to that. There is a position at large. That is in the city code for a planning commission member and that is myself, and it always has been before me, I believe it was Bill Hancock. But before, and then it's been that way for many, many years.
Well.
And specifically for extensions. Traditionally, the only extensions or recusals that I've done is if it relates to. Potential conflicts of interest of. You know, where I work or other potential conflicts of interest, not how it relates to power companies, and I have no conflict of interest with the power company. I don't have any conflict of interest as it relates to the Boardman Development Code. So I, I, I wouldn't abstain in this case.
One of the issues that Ethan asked was how come we're changing this in the middle of the game? And I don't think that that has been articulated or communicated to the rest of the board members of that question of why we're changing. That, 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 number one, because of what that does is take the rights away and all I'm asking for is the opportunity to communicate. Those issues that we brought up to the people that weren't here, because just reading it, okay, doesn't get the full message of what that really means.
So as much as, I mean, if I agree with you or didn't agree with you, that's the way the motion was passed in the last public hearing.
She, I mean, you know what, I was, the cops were called on me, okay, because Carla interrupted her because of revenue wanted to close the meeting. And not even have it go to this month. And, and, and that's, that's an issue that I had is she.
The meeting was continued and that's all we're.
Yeah, continue, but I, I, I was told that I couldn't speak anymore to bring up this issue then. About what I'm talking about right now.
So how does your issues you're bringing up right now relate to the matter at hand?
By the matter at hand.
The, the, the hearing that we're going to hear tonight.
So.
How does it relate to this?
So Radnul said that she, then I, please forgive me if I'm saying it in a way, oh, she said she wanted to close the meeting so this meeting wouldn't even happen. On this, on this commission action required. And she said, no, we're going to do it next month. And I said, well, wait a second, like, call it.
Can we have the, the meeting, sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to get my fact straight, because I'm looking here, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes, thank you.
Can I have the motion that's, that was passed on the last meeting?
Absolutely.
Well, let's go to the video, let's, let's go back to our video.
I want to read the rest.
Commissioner Tenai. Well, I'll just go to permission deliberation, I'll read the three paragraphs. Commissioner Tenai asked the planning commission, we're voting on these amendments tonight, she would not accept them. Planning official McPlank said the commission did not want to move forward with the owner component of the amendments. There are a lot of other changes that are worthy of consideration and a continued conversation. She feels it is important to continue the public testimony portion of the hearing to keep that a lot open to public. Commissioner Tenai made a motion to continue the discussion of the Boardman Development Code amendments to the October 19th, 2022 meeting. Commissioner Yamanis seconded the motion, the motion passed 40 with three absence.
So before we get into hearing, just from my understanding, the base of motion. Okay, and your attention of the.
That was my understanding, that's when we're closing the public hearing and leading discussion for the. For. To discuss.
Was that the understanding of the board members?
I'm sorry.
There was a forum.
This is a first, then, I'm, I'm sorry.
The record was never officially closed, is that correct? Discussion, discussion and public record are a big, huge difference here, if the public record was closed, which I don't believe was.
This is an issue.
The discussion.
I think there's some barrier there, so I read into this a little bit before the meeting. And it was never specifically discussed. Now, the meeting was continued. The public record was not closed, so written public testimony can be submitted for the record.
Where was that? Where, where's the policy on that?
I think we can probably send you some follow up information on that, but when a record remains open, but the public testimony is closed.
That a public testimony was closed, now it's not part of the motion at all. The discussion was closed, whatever that was, that doesn't.
Speak real quick, it says right here, Commissioner Salata closed the public hearing and resumed review of the meeting. Public hearing was closed. That's, I closed that down.
Can I ask?
She is, you said. So I closed that down. She wanted to keep it open so that she could come back and. Read, read up later. We close that down in public.
And then I.
Altogether.
And then I brought up.
To say. We kept it open so that we could discuss this more commissioners here this week. That's what we kept. We didn't keep public open. Close the public hearing, we kept this open so that we can discuss what happened when changes this.
Your motion didn't pass, correct?
I didn't motion, I closed it. I was here and guess.
On what motion did you close the public meeting? Who made that motion to. No one, no one made the motion to close it.
There's no motion required to close it.
My, my second question here is, is on a legislative action before this, aren't we required to have to open public meetings?
And their second one's going to be at city council, am I right?
Right, this is currently.
This is a recommendation for approval to the city council, the city council will be the one that actually makes the decision.
Currently it's scheduled for public hearing in front of the city council on November 8th. That could, you know, forward a recommendation tonight.
So if that makes sense, so there will be an additional.
But I'm still going to argue the fact that there was no motion made.
So. No motion required, oops. There's difference between a public meeting and a public hearing, so closing a public meeting, you don't need a motion.
This is a hearing, so do we need a motion to close a public hearing, yes, we do.
The motion was to continue the hearing.
Yep.
And which we are doing.
Okay.
Right now.
Yep.
And inside of that motion, the way I understand it from the other board members that are here, what is being read was public testimony was closed.
There was no mention of that.
This is how they control the narrative the whole time.
This is not the, the one narrative we did. Sorry. Yeah, you guys will, it's, it's just a sad, I'm sorry, have a great day, you too.
I still am going to argue that it was never public. The discussion was closed, maybe you guys all understood that, but it certainly was not what most of the board was.
So we're going to go ahead and move on into the public hearing. I think we've got consensus from the board that was here what the intention of the motion was. And we'll move on from there, so. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing, A dash B C 22 dash zero zero two, or I'll continue the hearing. The proposal, what we draw to a B C chapter 4.1 types of application of procedures will change a field title. Lines and category of owner and accomplish other minor housing, housekeeping changes. The applicable criteria for changes to the B C are found in chapter 4.1, section 4.1.6, type four procedure. So is there any additions before the, or goes to deliberation to the record or?
Sure, so there were a lot of suggestions by Commissioner Tenai. And so the version you have tonight, I've done. The best job I could at capturing all of those suggestions that she made. She reviewed probably two thirds, three quarters of the document and we talked through that at the last meeting. Some of those things were around consistency. Again, I'm not going to tell you I captured them all. But I tried to capture everyone that I noted, I captured, and there were some was like, well, there, there are other places and I, if I went through, I tried to. So those are in there. The amendments to the staff report are in a talent, so it, it, there's not a lot of amendments to the staff report, but. In the middle of page two. One of the things that came up was are there other examples for owner relative to. The, I think the question that, that you heard testimony on at the last meeting was both from Mr. Tolman and his attorney, Sarah Mitchell. Who argued that nobody had. Language in their development code that authorized. Authorized the inclusion of, of, or the ability for someone other than a record owner or a deed of owner. Or whatever you wanted, however you want to frame that. To make application, and so that's not the case, there's many examples throughout the state. So the change in the staff report says that there is an attachment to this finding of fact. That provides other examples for consideration, that's included just above the number two in the middle of page three. And that's really the only change to this staff report. Other than we changed the city council hearing date from November 1 and November 8. So I would call your attention to those examples that were provided. If you don't like the version that's in there, there are multiple other versions that you, you could look at and talk about and say, well, we, we like this one better or that one or. Or leave the one you've suggested, so there is that piece. And then the other thing that you have at your table, and if anybody in the audience is interested, there are two additional copies down here. But we do have a final opinion. And order from the Land Use Board of Appeals. On the action that the city took and in reviewing and approving the Umitil Electric Cooperative Transmission Law. And. I'm happy to help you understand the Luba decision. They can be difficult to read, it is, it is three attorneys writing lawyeries. And I will say as a planner who understands the law pretty well around land use, I struggle sometimes in reading Luba things. The highlight though is that the, the opponent, Mr. Tolman. His attorney represented three assignments of error, in other words, assignment of error mean you did this wrong. And in all three cases. Based on both, and in this case, Umitil Electric defended our decision. And we joined them on the response brief. And we rebutted there, you did this wrong and said, no, we didn't, this is how we did it right. And in all three instances, Luba said, city got it right. They denied all assignments of error and they affirmed our decision. I think the takeaway from that is it was in our right to allow a utility with condemnation rights who had gone through the condemnation process. We were not wrong to allow them to make application. That's what the Luba decision is telling us, so. We did it right here, we did it right at city council and Luba has affirmed that, so I think you should feel comfortable. In looking at and on another opportunity to include that as an owner category in our list of who can submit an application. And again, I'm going to stand by what I said in the staff report. I think in every case, and in my work for 20 plus years in the planning field. Utilities don't want to do condemnation, cities don't want to do condemnation, that's not. That's not what the objective is, the objective is, is to figure out how to install whatever the utility may be, water, wastewater, a road, a power line, a gas line. There's all kinds of utilities that we need to function as a city, as, as homeowners, as business owners, as people who travel around the community. Condemnation is the last resort, but it does happen. So that, that's what I would add, and I'm, I'm happy to walk through the document itself and, and kind of try to highlight the primary changes that are in there. We did do that last month, but again, there were a number of considerations that Commissioner Tenai brought forward. I, I, again, I tried to find all of them, I may have missed a few. If there are more that we should get before we send it on to the city council, I'm happy to capture those tonight, incorporate them accordingly. I would like to ask you to send this to the city council with a do adopt recommendation. Based on changes you make tonight, and I would encourage you to make changes around that owner piece if you feel comfortable with that.
So my final question is, the Luba document, is it going to be added to the record for?
I, I would like you to take action to add it to the record tonight, formally, I did not send it out in such a way to be a part of the record, so I would like you to add it to the record.
Does that make sense to everybody? Add it to the record. We'd need a motion.
You would need a motion to do that, yes.
So maybe we should do that before we move into deliberation. Sorry, motion.
I'd like to motion that we enter the final opinion order of Luba, number 2022 dash 029 to.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, like Commissioner Hyer in the second, from Commissioner Layden. To formally include the Luba document. Number 2022 dash 029 into the record. All those in favor, maybe I give a roll call, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Layden?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenai? Commissioner Breezy?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Salata?
Yeah.
Chairman Kane?
Yes. Motion passes. So moving into deliberation piece, does anybody have any additional questions or items to deliberate? Is that on this whole public hearing?
It would be on the recommendation of the public hearing to the city council. So whether we would recommend to approve or deny. The modification to the.
So we're going to, we're going to discuss the recommendation before.
Absolutely, if there's any further question that any commissioner feels like they want to bring ahead and discuss, then absolutely.
And I would encourage at a minimum to have a robust conversation around all that, I, I just, I really want to encourage you to do that.
So. I guess, me, having it written out here, our eminent domain. Property is now owner. I would, I don't, I don't like that in there. If basically anybody power your property, in my. in my eyes, starting an application, that way, I don't like that. Now, with the Luba case and stuff, wanna put in there, if court summons, yes, it has to be done. Submit the application. But I think there's process need to jump through before they are considering the application. In my opinion. So remember this section, the all the code order.
It's near the end of the chapter. Right, and there's two places where there's language related to this, it's on page, it will be page thirty and page thirty-one. So on page thirty, it talks about applications and initiation of application, who can, who can initiate it, and then on the next page, it talks about acceptance of it. And just refers back to four point one point seven hundred point D one to initiate the application. So, I, I, if you make changes to what's on page thirty, I think page thirty-one still works. So.
So, I, I would agree that I don't, I don't like the term power in that, my talics. The language that comes from the county examples that she has from Jefferson County, I think is a better, has better language. It's on this, the county, county examples.
It's on the front page or on the front page of the types of?
And I'm also sure like the Jefferson County, just because it doesn't mention anything about statutory, anything about statute, statutory authority, things like that, right? So then, you have the word statutory in there, they should refer back to the ORS, correct? So then?
My, 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 my concern with including specific ORS references is that they always change ORS.
Right, but if, if you were to add statutory, a statute, right?
Right.
Then it, it opens that up for interpretation of law. Correct?
Right, Washington County might be a better option.
Possibly, a lot of condemnation in eminent domain actually comes from case law.
Yes, but, but, but remember in our, and we referenced case law in our decision.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I get, but I'm gonna get into a big discussion on case law because I haven't briefly, or I hadn't done a lot of that. I certainly can't, if you want to do that for the next meeting. Yes, but certainly this power of whatever is way too broad, and you're gonna have arguments over power. If you leave it like that, but.
Yeah, so my question is, lovely recommendation, that's the least best section, no, I fully understand it. Is the entity that has the power of eminent domain related to the property? So, an entity that has the power of eminent domain is pretty broad, right? Should we refine that to the entity that has the authority from the PUD or the Public Utility Commission, PUC that gives them the authority to now go to, through an eminent domain process, process on that property?
Now you just narrow it all into power, yeah, so.
Well, not, not, okay, I'm not saying PUC. The entity that grants the authority to use eminent domain.
There are a number of them.
Yes, depending on which organization is, is, which section we're talking about here, but. So, is there more specific language in there? Because I agree, as I read that, there is a lot of entities that have the power to use eminent domain if they're approved through their regulatory or through their empowering commission.
Right.
Right, so how do you, how do you further refine that to, you know, not a, any organization has the power to sign the application, because I'm assuming the application needs to be signed after they've already been granted the approval to move to eminent domain proceedings.
Right, and in the proceeding, we had, that was exactly the case. We, they were withdrawn from the application, the initial application, and we did not, as a city, accept their application until they presented that they had obtained the authority through the circuit court process. So, in this case, it, what it was, it was the PUC who granted them a certificate of need that gave them the power of, of condemnation. And then they received that combination, condemnation, by taking the case to circuit court and circuit court granted them the right, so it was a multi-step process. And that's why I say Washington County, if you look at the whole, the whole E that's there, public agencies or private entities that have statutory rights of eminent domain for projects, they have the authority to construct. So in other words, a power company is only gonna get to that point if they've gone to the PUC, gotten their certificate of need, been granted the power of condemnation, and gone to circuit court to actually get the right to enter the property. And, and then anybody that would have the right to condemnation would have to do similar things under their statutory authority. Cities have the power of eminent domain based on statutes that apply to cities. Gas companies have power of eminent domain, and then they would probably also be through the PUC as would a utility like Umatil Electric. So, it, it's different mechanisms for different agencies or, or entities, and it's maybe better to leave it broader with agencies and entities than to narrow it. Because if you narrow it and you leave somebody out, then we're right back where we were before fighting about this and going through the Luba process again.
I guess, in my own personal opinion here, so I, I am a strong private property advocate for their rights, right? So, anytime you refine it and add additional step, that's not a bad thing to talk about eminent domain, in my personal opinion. Because the authority at hand should go through the process, which was done in this circumstance completely. So, at the same time, I read that a little bit differently, because I, I do have a little bit of experience from my Bay job and eminent domain on property. And there are entities, including some around here, that have the power of eminent domain currently, you know, and, and for them to be able to sign application without going through the process is a little concerning. And I think that there's additional language needs to be in there.
So?
Personally, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking for the commission here, I'm speaking for personal.
So, and I think, I think that's where Washington County comes in, so where it goes into public or private entities that have the statutory rights. So I think kind of what you're talking about, not so much narrowing it down, but that entity that legally can do this.
So they would never have?
It's not just anybody.
You would never have any option, it would stop right there.
Yes.
That you have no, you don't ever have a court backing them up for eminent domain.
So, just out of curiosity, I don't know if this is your, the court of honor has power of eminent domain, I don't know if they do whatever. They already have the statutory right of eminent domain, correct? If they have power of eminent domain, they have the statutory right of eminent domain. Is that kind of what you're getting? So no matter what, if they wanted it, they could just come and start an application with that, rather than going through and training for?
So look at Pendleton, the very top one, and it says, starts out with public agencies that own the property or have passed a resolution declaring that they intend to exercise a statutory authority to condemn the property. Now, in that case, the, it would, in that case, if, if, if we had something in our code that reflected this, that would have required the PUC to also provide us with an affirmative decision from their board that they were gonna, they were gonna do this. The other thing is probably not really well identified in any of these. With the exception of Jefferson County, Jefferson County does have the language that says, or by a condamner who has been granted immediate possession by a court of competent jurisdiction. That is what happened in our situation, is that the circuit court did grant them authority. So, I mean, Jefferson County, I think, might capture what we did the best. I don't know if it's the right one, but it's certainly, I think, and not just the underlying part, but more than the underlying.
So, I guess my question to you on that is, are we trying to write something that stand up for what we just did? Or are we trying to do something for the future of possible coming in?
Uh huh. I mean, yes, and I, I don't mean that to be confusing, but yes, I think it's important that we do this to codify the decision we just, we made. But I think that we are, we're only doing our best work is if we evaluate that and say, what really captures what needs to be in there in the future. So, I, I, I think, I think both parts are correct, Commissioner Salata.
Okay, I, basically, I'd like to see something that says that there is a document of need or something. That way, it could be put into an application. Kind of with, it already did, they went through the steps. And then now, okay, there is a need for it, it's been through the court system, the courts said, yes, there is a need, now they can go forward. We're having the power of that.
So what if?
That makes sense to me.
What if it took Washington County and then continued with the Jefferson County? So what if you said, in, under the Washington County example, it says, public agencies or private entities that have a statutory, that have statutory rights of eminent domain for projects they have the authority to construct and have been granted immediate possession by a court of competent jurisdiction? Now you've checked all the box, boxes.
So they've gone through all the steps, they've proven that, that what they need to do is right, and they have the documents proving it, so that this doesn't happen again.
They have the statutory authority. They've shown that, they've gone, in a, in a utility situation, they've gone and gotten their certificate of need from the Public Utility Commission. And, and then they worked to get all landowners to participate voluntarily, but two are on the outside saying no. Then they take that certificate of need, they take those two property owners, they go to the court of competent, however this is stated in here, court of competent jurisdiction, which in this case is circuit court, circuit court grants the condemnation based on a certificate of need. They bring that court, that court order or that court judgment in with their application that they have signed, because they have been granted the authority to construct based on a court of competent jurisdiction.
Perfect, and without that, they wouldn't be allowed to do this.
I think that's what we're trying to come up with, is what did it, what boxes do we want them to check for us to say, yes, you are a legal owner of right of, of the property, whether you own it in feet title or not, and they wouldn't, because they're, they're seeking an easement on it, they're not seeking to own it. They're seeking the right to cross the property above, on, or below. And that's what we're trying to get to, is, is, is oftentimes, all the rest of the owners signed the application. Because they agreed to the easement, they granted the easement, they signed the application for the utility to be installed. But for those who, who argued against, they went through condemnation, the condemnation has compelled them to sign it, to sign the application. So we need some way to move that, move that project along.
I agree with all of that.
I'm gonna say, I mean, if they prove that they've gone through all the right steps.
Okay, so I want to reread what I just sent you, so that our, our recorder tonight can capture it too. Public agencies or private entities that have statutory rights of eminent domain for projects they have the authority to construct and have been granted immediate possession by a court of competent jurisdiction.
Just out of curiosity, what's competent jurisdiction mean?
Company, it's, it's the, it's the jurisdiction that's, that's in play.
Against the authority.
Right, and in some cases, it would be your local circuit court, other cases, it might be federal court, so for federal projects, it would be federal court.
That's, that's exactly what it meant, like what kind of court it has to be.
Right. Right.
I, I might make one suggestion to you, sorry.
Okay.
I might make the suggestion that instead of having a separate item five, you add that to item four. For entity that has the power, blah, 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 but add that to underneath the record owner of the property, and it says, record owner of the property's name is most recent owner. Or the contract person, purchaser with written permission from the record owner, or this, because that's what it's really referencing is property, and, and five is, is kind of out of place from one through four, because it's a dish hole property, I don't know. So I think it would go under item four.
The question being that, does it stand on its own? I think it does, I think it should, because it does stand on its own, so. Is, is anyone of the five, right, so you don't have to have four to have five with this, this legal scenario and be without any of the other four. Each one of them stands on its own. Unless it is subsequent to record owner of property, note four, et cetera, is what it says. One is not based on the other, is it?
No, these are all standalone, I, you know, I might, okay, so Commissioner Marisi, you're making a good point. Maybe there should be six. Maybe there should be four, a record owner, five, a contract purchaser, and six, public agencies or private entities.
Yes.
It is, it is, it is. It's very explicit, it's, it's not lumping anybody together with someone else, it's, it's creating six very discrete categories that, that could be, that could make application.
I think that would be my preference. I can jump on board with you, as long as that language is there, I think we're, we're covering the bases.
Yeah, I like the, the.
The four, the five, and then the six.
Yeah.
That means that I think your, your section three on the next page is probably accurate.
Yes, yeah, it would work, it works, yes. Because it references the whole section, not any one piece.
That's gonna be the and, but one, two, and three.
Yes, good catch, yes, that needs to be an and, and.
I've got one more question, I'm just reading a little bit, catching me off guard, I'm trying to take carnage on the context here, but it says the city manager or planning official is, should that be city manager or the designated person in case there isn't a planning official?
So, you'll notice as we've gone through this document, we've changed planning, a city manager to planning official. The reason being is I think that's where the city's been for a long time, I mean, it's been a different title. That's where the city's been and it's where they're going. I would advocate that the city government structure is getting to a point where there will be some level of planning official that's gonna be working in, in this structure. I mean, there's just, there's just no amount of work to, to not have that be the case. So, this is the one place where I actually left the city manager, because it could be the city manager or the planning official here, but I think when it comes to implementing the code provisions, it's the planning official who's been doing it and is gonna continue doing it.
So what if the planning official's opinion is at odds with the city manager or the council itself?
I don't know how you would, if that's the case, Chair Kane, I think that's just. I don't know how you would, I i- if that's the case, Chair Kane, I think that's just the case. I mean, I I don't know that how you write this is gonna fix that, I mean, if they're at odds about where to move forward. I think by being specific here, you're giving a lot of different people the ability to initiate a change, to initiate an application. I think the, in some respects, almost the more the merrier.
So and one way to fix that problem, I guess, would be the city manager and the planning official instead of four, because then you both have the ingredients to get it done.
Right, for this for for staff to initiate it, yeah.
Chair, what do you think?
Well, I know that most all of our adopted, let's say, city manager or designate. And then you just. The designate would be. The planning official. But that that's what is stated in writing in all of our other things, so.
And 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 I come from a county environment and and Grant, I'll I'll state that. Um the there's a difference in law between cities and counties, counties are required by law to have a planning director, and the planning director has planning authority. Cities, the statute is different. Um there are a lot of small cities that don't have a planner, the city manager does it, the city, and if they don't have a city manager. Uh and we have cities in in our county here that don't have a city manager. And so it is the clerk or the recorder who's also trying to function as the planning official. And so in in those situations, it doesn't even say city manager, it may only authorize the city council. Some of the smaller cities don't even have planning commissions, their city council serves a dual role as a planning commission and a city council, so. Um you know, Boardman's in a good place because you have, you you've got a lot going on here. And you've got a lot of staff to help support all of that. And you've got a planning commission and a city council. And lots of volunteers to 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 fulfill all those roles.
So that should that be? Sorry, how come we have way out of bounds here, I apologize, but should that be in the city council? So the city council or their um authorized uh representative, which would be the city manager or the city official, or a city planning official?
I think if the city, no, I think if the city, if 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 a if the public were to come to the city council with a petition. It would be on order of the city council to make a change to the development code, or to the comprehensive plan, or to the municipal code. So, no, I think that the city council has the authority, they don't, now, they're gonna direct their city managers to do that, but it would be by order of the city council. Same thing can happen here, people could come into this body with a petition and say, we really think you should do that. And you could make the choice to say, yep, we agree, and. You provide the marching orders, now. You're appointed by the city council, the city council might override that and say, oh, we don't, we don't agree, we're gonna, we're not, we're not gonna go there. But. I think you still have the same authority based on your appointed role.
I just wanna make sure the last step, not only toes in the, you know, in the umbrella of the city, you know, how they interpret. Who's over their legislative, I just, so I just wanna make sure that it's all on the same. Page when it comes from the city, whether it's the city manager or planning official or city council, whoever it is, I just wanna make sure that's the prerogative of of what the. Organizations. You know, at the end of the day, I don't think I or maybe some other people care who actually signed the document, I just wanna make sure that. You know, the whole listing, it's coming from the city, you know, they're they're prerogated, not one person or another, right?
Yeah, and you know, six months from now, there's gonna be. Two or three different people sitting over here, so Karen's retiring and and I'm sure it's going on for her replacement and. My six to nine months is rapidly coming to an end and hopefully we can find somebody to sit here and.
And that's what, that's why I'm sitting here thinking about this, is we're not talking about the current situation where now we're talking about the next current situation and. There is gonna be time, and someday there's gonna be somebody that doesn't get along and and is this what we actually want to say, this? This would be the planning official and Lewis, city manager, all over the documents, so. Does that make sense to the city, you know, I mean?
I think also that, you know, the um. I always call it a pecking order charge, but anyway. This, you know, it's the city council, it's the city manager, and then the. Assistant city manager, if there is one, and then it falls out this way, you know, with department heads. And the planning. Official is a department head in in the way the city is set up. So if that's. Makes a huge difference to the conversation.
Okay.
That's what I know about that.
Okay, yeah, it seems to me that the city manager that in that situation would have the authority to pull the application. If they disagreed with their, you know, if there was something of that nature going on, right?
Yep.
Well, then I think you just. I don't know who would be the next city manager nor the next planning commission person, but you know, you're thinking that. Nobody wants to do three or four jobs, I mean, you would give that to the planning department, and that's what you'd expect them to do. Probably you would maybe want them to have a little, you know, pretty good. Code, so the so the city manager was a rest of what the planning department's doing, that they're not just out here. They moved themselves up in that pecking order. Above their what was intended by the city council.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that, right?
I like the city manager with the designate personally, but. You know, I I it's. I think it just because it's always been there. You know, and uh. But like Carla says, it's all, it's gonna be totally new people. And I think if you, I don't know, if you hired a planner that was really new. You know, Carla's got lots of experience, so she can give you good advice. I don't know, if any one of you came and stood over here, how would you feel comfortable about the advice you might be giving?
I I don't know, but I'd give a lot of it. Right, probably her kid. So I I figure us.
I'm gonna say in five days.
How long have you guys stayed here? You said six months?
I just said in six months, the people sitting over here will be different, I mean, so it's October, when we, you know, fast forward to March, it's gonna look different on this side of the table. So I don't.
Here's just an idea. What if we didn't change it in nine years, just not. I think they should kind of sail with this circumstance, because the public hearing stuff.
Yeah, you know, here's what I, here here's what I would tell you, um. You have to have faith in the people that are doing the jobs to ask them to do.
Yeah.
And and I think. I think you, I I think that's, I don't know, I don't know that I would say anymore, that you have to have faith in the people that you ask to do these jobs. If they go through a hiring process, they go through, you know, they're vetted, they're hired, they're put in this position. Um as much as I said, I'm not gonna be sitting here, that doesn't mean I'm still not gonna have some level of involvement. Going forward, certainly in probably in the short term, and probably a little longer than that, but if not me, someone else. And um I I think you have to have faith, and and. And and the city's growing, and at some point in time. Just knowing everything that's in front of the city as far as projects, growth, opportunity, um needs. The city needs a, somebody who can sit in the planning official role, and you can change that title, you can make it different, but in that planning official role. Uh who who can who can get the job done, and and clearly have a good working relationship with the city manager. But I think if you were to wander around in the building over there, I mean, Karen runs a pretty tight ship, she kind of rules the roost. Um but she's also given the directors in the city hall side a lot of authority. Um you know, when it comes to the building program, building official has the authority to run it. When it comes to public works, the public work director has the authority to run it. Um does does the planning official have the authority to run the 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 planning program? I mean, that's that's the question.
They would, because that would be a designate, the city, the city manager give that authority to that personnel.
Yes, because nothing and anything else says that the building department head. Has the authority, you know what I'm saying, he, they most certainly work. Under.
The city.
I mean, you you just give them that, you designate that as their position. Because even the finance person, I does not.
Okay, so back on topic, sorry. Or is there any other problems or discussion items that may be lost under, I think we passed out item five, it's section four point one point seventy. Did we agree to make six? Uh very bad, I I mean, this is a big, strong feeling, I mean, I mean, you might as well break up, it's like, it would be one of the six.
So the six are order of city council, resolution of the planning commission, the city manager or planning official, a record owner of property. Person whose name is on the most recent recorded deed, and then five would be contract purchaser with written permission from the record owner. And six would be the example.
Yeah. Do you guys want planning official on there, or do you want to use any? I would say city manager, designate, under the. Or planning official would be due, or designate. And that would be consistent in multiple applications, so. To change, change the planning official or designate, so it's city manager. I think the city manager, the the city official's gonna have that authority, just can be granted by the city manager. But at any given time, there could be at odds inside of a public, or inside of a a city, and you know. With today's rules, you know, if the city manager paused the planning official, it might be some time before a planning official is removed or. Or things change, so I think you she could easily remove, or they could easily remove their designate, but not necessarily the position. Because there are some. Processal flaws, so you're throughout this whole thing, you wanna keep it a city manager or designate, or designate rather than, yes.
Because I think. I think like when Barry passed away, if Carla hadn't have come, you know, and we begged her to come.
Well, you begged me before he passed.
Well, that's true, and then we made you really work hard, but. But you, that would be an example of where we would have nobody in that slot. You know what I'm saying, and if it hadn't have been for Carla, we would have been really scrambling. I mean, and probably having to um contract with some other company to provide our planning services. So. In that respect, too, you might maybe have the city manager and the designate. Make that easier. Because if we had to contract with some other agency, you know, or community or whatever. I think you would be hesitant to give them. How how much authority you give them right away.
I I I can jump on board with that, so. And maybe that changes something in the future, but I think. Yeah, that was on the other. One, uh I think title. On uh four point one point one. Four point one point two hundred. For a person's. Designate, does it need?
Oh, you'll get two designates, I'm searching, searching, replacing, or, but that's gonna change anyway, because you're gonna work. I'm gonna between now and the city council version, if I'm understanding this right, you want to leave city manager and remove planning official throughout the document. So I'm gonna reject that change.
I think that's fine.
Not sure.
It was.
Not sure. Okay, and a- again, I put a, again, I tried to find all the changes that. Um Fisher, can I could identify, I don't know that I caught them all, um I'll I'll work through it again this time, but um. There are probably some additional changes from last time, because I did kind of find two of it again, but. Uh there are. I think the key ones that we hit tonight are probably the most important, as this goes forward to city council. They will, of course, hear this again under a de novo situation, so we have a brand new hearing in front of the council. Uh with your recommendation, so we're gonna reject the change from city manager and planning official. Um on page thirty, we're gonna have it be city manager or designate. And then we're gonna change the list to be four, five, and six, six is gonna be what we went through earlier. And we've got an and on page thirty one that we added, and I think that's what we've changed tonight. I appreciate the conversation.
Any other comments? So remind me, do you want to close deliberations or do you need to make a resolution?
You you are at the point now where you are deliberating to a decision, that you've been, you've basically abandoned deliberation, so.
Yeah, so do you make a motion in deliberations or do you close the hearing and then make?
You would need to close the hearing to to do your deliberations, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't following the question.
So actually, the last thing they did, they closed the. And then they were on deliberations that took until tonight, but he reopened the hearing, okay, all right, so we need to close the hearing and then do deliberation and motion.
Because we had to open the hearing to have the additional comments.
We're still in the hearing.
Okay, so I will. Close the public hearing at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Can I say something before you close the? Public hearing that you said? And it's a cheeky, and you said you were the one to ask.
Absolutely.
Well, is it, is it comment on the action item or is it a public comment generally?
Action item or is public comment general?
It's on what we, what you're talking about.
Um I don't think we can take a public comment on. The matter at hand, since we did prob- close the the public testimony portion.
Well, like all the others, that's not what we understood. The best way to treat that.
Okay, so now at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And uh we will continue to deliberate. And we're looking for a motion, I think we've got everything in front of us unless there's additional comments or. Uh in summary, we're going to make the edits. As discussed with the desert uh city manager. Or designate as well as the major edits to section four point one point seven. The uh. Item, addition of items and the modification item number four.
I'm sorry, I must have zoned out on something, um. So you just closed the public hearing, which we. Said we weren't having a public hearing?
So, no, we we had to open the new public hearing to add additional items to the record and not, we could add it to the record without the hearing being opened.
Okay.
But we added additional items and stuff.
Okay, but then I think people will be confused then when they, that you said you closing the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
So you might.
But previously, we had closed the public testimony portion.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
That might if they was, yeah, listen to that.
Yeah. So there'll be a motion or further discussion. Except all changes to the code.
Or in the government code.
Uh we talked about us tonight. Uh, we talked about tonight. I'm trying to figure.
Okay, you'll clean it up?
Yeah, I mean, okay. I'll make it, too. Okay, so the motion from Commissioner Swat to recommend changes to the development code. To the city council, to include the changes noted in our practice and the additional changes that we. Made known of tonight, to include the addition of, or modification of city official to city manager or designee. Or planning official to city manager designee. And also, uh, to add, um. Modify section four and four point one point seven. Zero. Section, okay, to modify four point one point seven, section B subsection four, to remove. Uh, a contract purchaser. Take contract purchaser, make it item five. And then make the new section as discussed in Carlos, uh, read, can you read that aloud on the other row? Is item number six. And that subsequently would add the addition to four point one point seven. Section A subsection three, conclude the signature or, uh, authority.
And the language for that number six is public agencies or private entities that have statutory rights in eminent domain. For projects they have the authority to construct and have been granted immediate possession by a court of competent jurisdiction.
I think that's. So, roll call, the, the, is that it, is? Yes, okay, roll call please.
Certainly, Commissioner Layton, yes. Commissioner Jimenez, yes. Commissioner tonight, no. Commissioner Bracy?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Salata?
Yes.
Chairman Kane?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Six. Six or. Okay. Discussion items, I guess one comment I would have moving forward and. I might be missing something here, so we'll take it out of context, but. Uh, so the last time we tried to open up the development code for modifications, we had, and I'm not saying this is the right, uh. Process, but last time we did it, we did have a thought work session to discuss the modification before we got to documentation phase. Now we just said that maybe we should do that moving forward with additional modifications.
Yeah, this one I approached a bit differently, mostly because we had that, that decision, um, the, you know, that was going a little bit and. Um, you know, wanted to, to start the process to, to look at this, so. I would have normally have done it this way, I would have normally said, had a broader conversation, where should we start, all of that. But I'm, but I would say that this is probably a good chapter to start in. Uh, because this is how we do things and, and there were a number of things in this chapter that became evident as we went through. The appeal processes, um, the multitude of them. And because of that, there are some appeal deadlines, there are some things that are in this chapter that we don't do. Um, there are some things that sexually are not in alignment, so. If we're gonna try to get the process right, this is the process chapter. So we're, we're fixing those, we're probably fixing some of the most, um.
Well, I think V two H is, is the next thing probably coming up that would. Have anything to probably do with this process, you know, I think that. Cause eventually, they're going to want to build the power line.
Is there section of persuasion goes to city jurisdiction?
I don't think so.
We, they're asking, they, they want some right away from us out, uh, circle fifty two. And, and so that would be, I mean, but it just is another instance where. Somebody, if I would, if we, the city would choose to say, no, I'm not gonna give you right away out there. They can do this whole condemnation thing. You know, waste a lot of money and time just to get.
Is that a city owned property, right? So that just your city, city own, and I don't think you can down city over property. Just a, yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, but just be prepared.
Okay.
Yeah, if the city said no, the condemnation, the condemnation process, because that's a state issued permit would probably, I don't know, it would be circuit court. I don't know.
But there's always things coming down the way.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was just recognition, I remember last time we based modifications, in fact, I don't think we ever ended making any modifications, but we had a work session. And it felt like we were doing something, so.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to discussion items, so planning official report.
I, I don't have a lot, I didn't write anything official, um. My six to nine months is nine months, the middle of November. So I guess I'm just letting everybody know the middle of November is the end of my nine months, so we'll. The end of my nine months is the middle of November, so, um. Anyway, we'll just leave that there, um, we've, in those not almost nine months, I think the fires are out. Um, I mean, big things that when I got there were the UVC transmission line, uh, that appeal process was nearing its end. Um, the loop road, we weren't quite as far along with, um, and wrap up that, I'm sure I have that Luba decision the end of this month. And know who was gonna decide on that. Um, we're now, we're just kind of, um. Doing the daily stuff, uh, we've been internally been having a development team meeting now for a number of months. Um, I think we're getting organized around that and they're getting to be shorter and maybe we can even get to every other week rather than every week. Um, but what's, uh. The Biden economy, um, I, I think we are seeing some effect of that here. Uh, we've seen a tiny slowdown, uh, we've all kind of been able to take a little bit of a breather the last, oh, I don't know, almost thirty days, maybe it seems like. Um. I don't know how many of you had ever seen, uh, Mr. Byler's office, um, you would not recognize it today. Um, I've gone through every paper in his office now, I can say that, um. I have not filed all those papers yet, and that's the next thing on the list to do, but. Um, that has been a huge accomplishment and I have to give a lot of. Um, I have to say thanks to Rolf Wright, who has helped immensely in the process. He and I sat in the large conference room, we occupied the large conference room for two months, I think. Nobody could meet in there, um, it, I mean, there was a pa- there were papers on every surface. And, uh, Rolf helped so much in going through, um, Barry's records and the papers. Um, and again, the next step is to file everything, to create the filing system and, and, and get it organized and a filing system and. So that's been moving along, um, I think we're. We approved a lot of zoning permits, um, Jackie, you said we're a ninety year mark, I mean.
Yeah, or ninety.
That's in this calendar year, that, that is a, a tremendous amount of activity, um. We've, we've created five new application forms, uh, that are up on the website, um, I've got three more in the hopper that will be going up soon. Um, one of the things that we've been having a lot of talk about is what has practice been and what does our code really require? And I guess you guys need to know that you might hear from people saying, she just requires a whole lot more than Barry did. Yeah, and, and it's because of what the code requires, um, and we're trying really hard to figure out what the code requires and how we'll apply it. Um. So. I guess the next thing is, we've got, we've got some new developers that are coming to town, would wanna do some things. Uh, we'll be talking about a couple of those tomorrow at our development team meeting, but, uh. The security company, uh, that works for Amazon. Uh, or one of them, I also just wanted more, but one of them is, uh, looking throughout the region. Um, and I think has been talking to at least three, if not four, of the cities here in our six city area. Uh, to do apartments or some kind of residential development. Um, that would not be designed exclusively for those security personnel. But to create more housing opportunities for those pe- for, for their staff as well as others. And so, um, we're gonna start having that conversation, we'll see how that goes. Um, and, and we've got some other things that are happening, we've got some, uh, people who are interested in a commercial property that sits over there and. Fig- figuring out how to finish the, I'm just gonna learn all subdivision names, the Chapparrell, um, development. Um, we are seeing Tuscany and River Ridge kind of move into their next phases, albeit not as fast as they have been, but they are continuing to build. Um, if you've been in the port lately and driven by tide water, they moved a lot of dirt and if you get back there and really take a look. There are a lot of building materials piled back there, so when those apartments start going up, they're gonna go up fast. Um, and that will be six new apartment buildings and a clubhouse first, followed quickly by the first twelve of their town halls. Um, so I, I think that's kind of the planning official for, happy to answer any questions you might have. I, I, the only other thing I would say is that we have this, we're having great discussions around parking lots and should they be paid? And why have they not been historically paid and how do we get to pay them? And then the other discussion that we're having right now is about food pots and, and how do we, um. You know, how do we make sure that what we've got is, is really meeting all of the requirements, whether they be land, planning, building codes, health department, what, whatever it may be, so. It's, uh, it's been good conversations.
What was saying about parking lots create less turmoil?
Oh, yeah, you know, there's good things and bad things about taming morale and, and we can have that debate, Jacob, but it's not here tonight.
Uh, you have a question, um. Because are you looking for planning person, is there anything?
There's been, the position, there are two positions have been posted for several months. Um, the posting public states, we are looking at both and we'll fill one. Um, we received two applications, one had no skills and the other one had weak skills, um. But I'm, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna do one more ditch, like a last ditch effort and go out and try to really. Splash that again and see what we get.
So one, one of the two posts.
So one is for a senior planner and the other one is for a planning official. Uh, skill level, not a lot of difference, but skill level, yeah. Planning official would be, you know, somebody with, you know, significant experience, senior planner would have some experience. So. But we're looking for somebody with experience, we're not looking to bring somebody in that we've got to start from the, from the beginning, train. Yeah. But maybe if you know anybody or think you might be interested yourself, come by and talk to me.
You, sir. Okay, so I was gonna skip the next section of the discussion items, seeing, you know, like, from training topic.
It is, what I will tell you is you all now have, some of you tonight, okay, if, if you've got that thing with the orange cover at your, at your seat. I think right then, got hers, what, the month before and even you got yours last month, um, I'll just make this very, very quick. This is one more thing about the goals, this is the last thing I'm gonna give you about the goals, though, I think. Um, this is the goals from the state's perspective, it just builds on some of the information that we've previously provided. Um, I think we're gonna turn the page on the conference of planned components and move next to, um, information around development codes. So look for that, um, next month. Um, and we can go back and kind of go through any and all of this. I mean, if there's, at this point in time, there's something on the agenda for next month, we've not had an application be submitted. Um, and at this point, it would be too late to get something on the agenda for next month, I think next month is, is, uh, November sixteenth. Um, so do put that, um, date on your calendar. Um. If we don't have any, if we don't have a, I guess I will ask this question. If we don't have a, an action item, do you guys wanna take November off or do you want to come in and talk about all the things that you have in your binder? It's a Wednesday, it's the third Wednesday, it is the Wednesday of the week before Thanksgiving week.
Today after the fifteenth, the day before September.
Well, if you're telling them that.
So December.
November, December.
Yeah, December, December falls, of course, will be the third Wednesday as well, so December will be the twenty first.
Well, that's almost Christmas.
Yeah.
Oh.
You know, these people will be out of time. I wouldn't have it happen at every meeting, like December eighth, I agree, but if we have applications here, we don't have to.
Right, if, if an application comes in and it needs to be heard in December, I mean, the benefit, what I could do is try to figure out if we can have that meeting a week earlier. So what, what you might wanna do is just tentatively think that I would work towards a December fourteenth meeting as opposed to a December twenty first meeting. If we have something that looks like it might need to be on the December agenda, if that works for all of you.
Does that screw up people's timeline for getting stuff?
Not if we're posted now.
Right.
If we're posted now, the meeting will be a week ahead, that's not gonna affect a two months down the road.
It'll be kind of, at least.
Right.
I personally wouldn't be here, I'm not gonna submit for Key West, and I'm going up for a week and a half.
So you would have missed either of them or both of them potentially.
I would be back on, what's the Sunday, the, the Sunday after that, so I'd be back like on the, uh.
The eighteen?
The ten for the eighteen.
Okay. So you wouldn't be here if the meeting was on the twenty first, but you wouldn't be here if it's on the fourteen?
Yes, yeah.
Zach, are you here on the fourteen?
I am, I am, I'm good with either date.
Okay. Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put something on the website of a change of date, I, I just assumed you'd do that sooner rather than later. So are you guys thinking December fourteenth is preferable to December twenty one generally?
I would prefer the first.
Okay. Okay, so we will move the December meeting to December, the, what did I just say, December fourteen? And if there's no application, we could cancel December. As the third alternative, and then that means we will commit to being here on November sixteen. And if we don't have an action item, we will have, we'll talk about this. That. Yeah, or set, kind of a work, and you know what we might do, I, I don't wanna do a lot of work moving towards what are we gonna do with the development code? Cause I'm not gonna be here to begin with.
Well, what did they say like tonight about changes with the vote, doesn't anyone remember the question I left in my paper at the call?
Oh, yeah, there was a, there was a city council forum tonight, you did ask that question, you know what, I stepped out of the room and I stepped back in, so I didn't hear. I just, you know, I didn't hear the answers, so.
I, I guess the first work session might lay out the process or changing certain elements in the developer code and maybe what's the book, yeah, so. Even if you're not around for, for the future, you might be able to leave us some, an outline, good information to keep pushing forward.
Well, and, and I think, I, I, there's this proverbial chicken and egg question. And that might be a really good discussion next month, would be, you know, when you start thinking about changing your development code. Your comprehensive plan is your guidance document and that's where you set your policy. And if you want your development code to require everybody to have red houses, but your policy says they can only be green. You've got a problem, now that's a really simple example, but maybe it explains what I'm trying to say, so. I think the chicken and egg thing is, is, there's a lot of issues in the development code, but how do you marry those with a comprehensive plan? So where do you start and how do you walk through that, those processes? And then I'm finding more often than not that I'm working with Rolf and we're kind of looking at, well, what does the municipal code say? There's a couple of places where the municipal code has influenced into that as well. And there are some things that I know the city wants to incorporate into one or the other, the development code or the municipal code around business licenses, solicitors. You know, food pot does not currently called out and regulated and that seems to be a burgeoning business form. Is that best? Is that best regulated in the unit code or the development code, so there's kind of this hierarchy of things that I think we could have that kind of philosophical conversation around as well. So we can do that in December.
Yeah, I remember a couple months back, we talked about. Either change the code or something, I would want to see the parks and stuff that are being closed.
Right.
Something like that too, so I don't know.
Well, I.
New parks, I don't know, but they're just green.
Right, right.
So we need to actually put down what we want to see in those parks so they can get a build on with the houses and houses.
I think, yeah, I I think there's, there's probably two or three work sessions where we, you know, as a group, we can kind of think about, well, where do you wanna start? And then once you get to that point where you're starting. It's a big darn development code.
Yeah.
We did one tiny part tonight, so um. You'll still be at this in a year or two, just saying.
Which is very common, it's starting to get about the.
Yeah. Right, right, you you guys know for more time than I've been here, you guys have been, all, you've all been here for a year, year and a half, three years, five years. You know where those hotspots are, so we can certainly brainstorm what those hotspots have been too, and capture those, and that can kind of narrow where some folks could be too. And then how do we balance that against the, the comp plan and the municipal, municipal, so, yeah.
Alright, so is there any public comment?
Well, we did have two slips and they left earlier, so um. Public comment?
Any comments? Okay, next meeting's uh possibly November sixteenth.
I think it is November sixteenth, we will, we will do this if we don't have an action item, and maybe this even if we have an action item.
Thank you, and I'll run a little video.